Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilors and their guests. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 6:38 on Monday, March 16th. Will the councilors and their guests please rise for a moment of silence? I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Counselor Gomez. Present Counselor Whitfield. Absent Counselor Davila. Present Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present Counselor Curran. Present. Present Counselor Ramos. Present. Present Counselor Walsh. Absent Counselor Williams. Absent Counselor Allen. Present. Present Counselor Letterman. Present. Present Counselor Edwards. Absent Counselor Brown. Absent Counselor Hearst.
Present. You please remain standing for a moment of silence. At this time, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're going to veer from the script just a bit this evening, considering the fact that COVID-19 is upon not just the city of Springfield, but the country. I thought it was important that we have our Commissioner Helen Carlton-Harris to just provide us with a brief update. After she finishes her update on COVID-19, I will allow councilors who are in attendance to ask one question, if they have one, and then we will move on to our regularly scheduled meeting. Commissioner, thank you so much for coming and taking time out of your busy schedule.
Absolutely. First of all, let me begin by thanking you, Counselor Hearst, for inviting me to this very important meeting. I do think it's important for all of the residents and the city councilors to have concrete information. I am also appreciative to those city councilors who have reached out to me to ask questions. So, I want to thank you, and I think each and every one of you know that the health and welfare of the residents of the city of Springfield are of utmost importance to each and every one of us. And I know each and every one of the city councilors has been concerned about COVID-19. I'm going to just make some opening remarks, go through a brief slideshow, then I will answer any questions that you have. First of all, it's important to acknowledge that the Department of Health and Human Services is the Board of Health for the city of Springfield. There are 351 cities and towns in the city of Springfield, and each one has a Board of Health. In many states, Boards of Health are by county. We have individual Boards of Health. Here, in the city of Springfield, we are very fortunate that we have a functioning Board of Health. As you might imagine, there are Boards of Health up in the Berkshires and other places that don't have a robust Board of Health. So, we are absolutely fortunate that we do have a Board of Health in the city that is functioning, particularly at this very critical moment. In Massachusetts, we have a system called Maven. Maven is our infectious disease reporting software. Each Board of Health has a Maven software that they can check into to see if there are any infectious diseases within the borders of their city. Maven is the software that alerts us if we have an infection in the city of Springfield. As I stand here right now, there are no positive cases of COVID-19 in the city of Springfield. There is one that has been reported in Hampton County. However, that individual does not live in the city of Springfield. I think most of you are very much aware of the fact that after 9/11, we were all very much concerned about bioterrorism. I cannot tell you the number of anthrax calls I went to after 9/11, looking and trying to make sure that we were responding to white powder incidences. And so, we think that it's very important that you understand that Boards of Health have been since then prepared and trying to prepare for what might happen as far as bioterrorism is concerned and bacteria and/or viruses. We are here in a social recession. A social recession is a recession where we're asking individuals to social distance. We're asking individuals to be at home. We have closed schools. And so, there are individuals who, at this time, are really challenged by isolation. And so, we have a social recession, which really is a collapse in the contact of individuals that we are used to interacting with. And so, our very important reason that we're doing this is to be able to flatten the curve. Every decision that we're making has to do with protecting the health and welfare of the residents of the city of Springfield and the Western Region. It's important to note that we, in the city of Springfield, do have borders. We border Connecticut. We border other states. We border other cities in the Commonwealth and also in the Western Region. This virus is behaving in ways that we have never seen before. It's called a novel coronavirus because it's new. We have had coronaviruses around since the 1960s in various forms. However, I do not believe that anyone has ever seen a virus that has been this contagious and has behaved in this way. And so, we are making decisions based on the fact that this is a very contagious virus. And so, it was first identified in the 1960s, and they do spread. Coronaviruses spreads the same way other cold-causing viruses do, through infected people coughing and sneezing, and by touching an infected person's hand or face, or by them touching their hands or face. This virus can live on doorknobs and surfaces. There are reports saying that it lives anywhere from two hours to two days. They do believe that the two-day scenario has to do with the fact that the virus will dissipate a bit, but that virus can still live on surfaces. And so, it's also important to acknowledge that individuals do get viruses. And so, we are, again, monitoring this one because of the way it is behaving across the nation. I know that each and every one of you, if you turn on your news, you can't help but be concerned about the way this virus is behaving. And so, we talk about community spread. Community spread is doctors and health officials use this term when they don't know the source of an infection. With COVID-19, it usually refers to someone who gets the virus even though they haven't been out of the country or haven't been exposed to someone who's traveled abroad. How do we prevent the spread? You've heard this over and over again, and I certainly cannot stress it enough. In order to prevent community spread, we need individuals to wash their hands often with an alcohol-based sanitizer that kills the virus on your hands. Keep your distance. This social distancing, we're talking about, may be new language, but it really means just keeping some space in between you and the next person. Don't touch your face. And so, we know that this virus can live on surfaces, and if they get into your eyes, nose, mouth, they can get into your body. There is no need, in our opinion, to universally wear face masks unless you have a virus that you do not want to spread to other individuals. So, it is more to protect other individuals in the event that you have a virus. There is no treatment for COVID-19. And so, as you listen and you watch, you know that COVID-19 individuals and organizations and labs and everyone around the country is racing for a vaccine. This probably won't happen for a year and a half. And so, the outlook for individuals with COVID-19, we know that some folks, it can be extremely serious, such as individuals who are older. And that is really what we're seeing. Now, the science is what individuals are following, and the science is coming from our look back, for the most part, in China, seeing who was impacted and what we know. It was individuals over the age of 60 who had weakened immune systems, medical conditions such as bronchitis, emphysema, high blood pressure, heart disease, lung disease, cancer, or diabetes. When I talk to individuals who are over the age of 60, one of the important things I tell them is to be prepared. Stock up on food and other supplies for an extended period. Contact their healthcare provider to make sure that they have enough medication, and that's really very important. If someone can't get medication, what we're seeing is a lot of mail-order medication. And so, it is important that individuals do that, particularly individuals who are older, and avoid people who are sick. We talk about it all the time, and I'm hopeful that all of our residents will adhere to making sure that if they're sick, they stay home. The preventative measures, you've heard over and over again and again. I cannot say that enough. Wash your hands often. Stay home if you're sick. Cover your face from coughing and sneezing. And most importantly, it's important that we are checking up on each other. We all have elders in our families and in our lives, and so, it's important that we're checking to make sure that they have what they need in order to be able to sustain themselves, even when we can't be as close to them as we would like. We are in the mitigation phase, and what that means is that we are making structural changes to limit the impact of this virus. One of these structural changes we have made in the city of Springfield, as you're aware, is that we have closed City Hall to the public. We have asked our employees to stay home if they're sick. We have asked individuals in our community circles to use social distancing, and I am so happy to look around this chamber and see that our city councilors are adhering to the good advice that public health professionals are absolutely trying to do. The goal, and you've heard this term, is to flatten the curve. I like to use the fire analogy. And so, if there's a fire, and the fire burns quickly and then goes away, so you hit this peak, and then it goes down. What we're trying to do is use the smoldering analogy, and so, we can spread this out over time. Our biggest concern is our hospital systems being overwhelmed. As you know, when a lot of individuals show up at the emergency room, our ICUs, our ventilators, the healthcare system in America, not just simply in the Western Region, may not be well-suited to handle an influx of individuals who might need ventilators or might need to be in ICU. So, we're asking individuals, if you're feeling sick, stay home. Call your primary care physician and get advice. Don't just show up at the emergency room because that is going to put a strain on the healthcare system. And so, that's part of what we are talking about, is flattening the curve. The other thing that's important is the mental health of our residents. Our children are home. They're going to ask questions. We want parents to ask open-ended questions to their children. What are you hearing? Provide concrete answers. Try to be calm with children. Try to talk a little bit about viruses, younger children. You can talk about having baby powder on your hands and putting it on a balloon, and somehow, that helps them understand that viruses can be transferred. So, it's important to talk to our children who are feeling anxiety. Think about it. For the next three weeks, they will not be in the classroom. This is not normal. And so, our children are certainly feeling some of this, as well as our elders. I tell individuals that they have power. They have power even though we have lost some control at this point. The power relies in our ability to adhere to those very, very important strategies that we just talked about. That's our power. Social distancing, that's our power. Washing your hands, covering your mouth. We can be in partnership with this virus, and that's what we are asking the residents of the city of Springfield and the Western Region to do. So, Mr. President, again, I want to thank you so much for asking me to come here. I think as much information as we can share with each other, that's what's critical, that we are in this together. We are certainly in this together, and I believe very strongly that we will get through this together. But it's going to take all of us working in partnership, particularly with our residents. So, I thank you again for inviting me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can at this time.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for accepting the late invitation. I think it's not only helpful for the city council, but also helpful for those who watch our meetings at home on television. We'll give an opportunity for each counselor to ask one question, and then we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. If there's anyone who has a burning question for the Commissioner at this time, feel free. If there are none, Counselor Davila.
Are they going to use personal time? Or is the city just going to pay out? Maybe it's a TJ question.
The city of Springfield will not lay off any employees. The city of Springfield is asking all employees who are essential to come to work, and those that can work from home and those that have the ability to be mobile, those individuals will be granted that dispensation, if you will, or at least be able to do that. They will continue to get paid. That is the same for the school department, is my understanding.
So, thank you, Commissioner. And if we could just direct our questions towards questions that I'm sure Commissioner can answer, any questions that come her way. But if they can be more directed towards her department and towards the Department of Health and Human Services, it would be greatly appreciated. I will inform the council that we are going to have weekly meetings in which we will be able to have a conversation with the administration itself on a weekly basis. So, we'll talk about that a little later. Are there any other questions from the council? Counselor Letterman.
Mr. President, not a question, but I think I speak for us all when I say thank you to the Commissioner for all the work that her and the other department has there doing. We've been in regular communication in the lead-up to the containment effort, and we know how much is on your plate at this time. If we can be of support, I know the President is saying we're going to be in communication continuing, but please don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other questions and/or comments from councilors who haven't spoken? Counselor Allen, did you have a? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I sincerely appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule. I know I said that we didn't want to duplicate, you know, having multiple meetings because we do know how hectic your schedule is, but I thought it was important, being that this is going to be our last meeting in the chambers for a while that you come and brief, not only the councilors, but also those listening at home. So, I thank you very much.
And I'm very happy to do that at any time. It was a pleasure to see you at this morning's briefing, so thank you for being there. And again, anytime you want information from me or my department, I stand ready, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. All right, with that being said, we are going to amend the agenda or continue to amend the agenda to expedite this meeting. We will skip over reports of committee, and we'll start. Madam Clerk, can you please call item number one on the agenda?
I have here a petition for Orson's Regulation article.
Thank you. I know, I think the desire was for this to be sent to committee. This was actually something that we started many years ago, and I know when I looked at it, that they're asking for the city council to be the special permitting-granting authority, and I certainly had some questions with it, and I talked to some other councilors. And we don't necessarily think that that might be in the best interest of this particular issue. So, being that it was going, thank you, sir. There's a motion to send it to committee, seconded by Counselor Letterman. All those in favor of sending the petition to committee, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Petition is sent to committee. Madam Clerk, will you please read the next item on the agenda?
I have here a petition for Comcast Bay Street.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of this petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a petition Comcast City Hall of Fame Avenue.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Petition is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a petition for Eversource, 6310.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Is the gentleman here representing Eversource?
Yes. So, what I've asked is for all of the petitions, for all of the petitions for this particular meeting to have either a representative from the Department of Public Works or Chris Signoli himself to be present. And so, he is here on behalf of Chris Signoli.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I just, he didn't identify himself.
Yes, I apologize. Can you please state your name and address for the record? That was my fault.
My name is Hector Bella, representing the PW Engineering Department, 1956 Parker Street.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
This is quite an information. I believe that there is, though, a representative of Eversource is also here.
And nay should not be here.
It's outside.
Okay. If you could step outside, please, it'd be greatly appreciated as the meeting is closed to individuals from the public. Thank you, Counselor. Are there any questions or comments regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a petition Comcast Williams Street.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting this petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is accepted. We are going to go out of order in hopes of clearing the chamber as quickly as possible. Madam Clerk, will you please call item number 13 on the agenda? Under unfinished business?
Item number 13, a petition for Oxford Street.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition?
Mr. President, I believe we sent this to committee. Can't remember the exact reason why we sent this committee, but I don't believe we've had a committee meeting on this. Is there an urgency to this?
If there is an objection from the council, then we will leave it in committee.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just on that same item, I believe we sent a number of these petitions to committee at the last meeting because there weren't representatives to speak on them.
Yes.
But given the state of emergency that's been declared and the fact that we've allowed the DPW here today to represent all petitions, and given the fact that we won't be meeting again in the scheduled capacity in the near future as a result of the state of emergency, I would be of the mind that we may want to clear the petitions to allow work to continue in the city.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman.
I agree with Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Are there any questions or comments regarding item number 13? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call item number 14 on the agenda?
I have here a petition for Eversource Liberty Street.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a petition for Eversource Dwight Street.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is accepted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the final item with respect to petitions?
I have here a petition for CMA Pembroke Circle.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this petition from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting this petition, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The petition is accepted. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, will you please call item number six on the agenda?
I have here Parks Kids and Cops Dream Court Grant, $8,500.
Do you have a SSY grant or?
Yes, that is it.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
TJ Plant, CAFO, 42 Garfield Street, Springfield. The grant is for $240,000 increase for the police department for youth intervention programs. The intervention strategy is community-based organization, education, training, and workforce development for our youth and counseling services if necessary.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Grant is accepted. All those in, Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Item number six, Parks Kids and.
Item number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's one.
Yes.
Increase in funding SSY grant, $24,000.
We did, do I have it wrong here? We did number six, correct? Which was increase in funding for the SSY?
No.
Yes.
Okay, that was seven. My apologies. So, I must have an older version. You have the SSY grant. Item number six. So, we've already approved the SSY grant. Madam Clerk, will you please call it how you have it on your record?
Increase in funding SSY grants.
We just approved that one. Can you call the other one?
Parks Kids and Cops Dream Courts Grant, $8,500.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting this grant, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Grant is accepted. I apologize for the confusion. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
I have here a budget transfer within a department, $85,603.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a transfer to clean up the deficit for snow and ice in the Facilities Department. It's coming from a transfer from the Personal Services lineup to the OTPS line item.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ramos.
You have eight councilors present?
I think this one requires a majority roll call.
This is a financial order?
I think it's a transfer within departments.
Correct. That's right.
So, I think this requires a majority.
I think it's just a majority for this one.
I think it's two-thirds for the next one.
We may not be able to do the national spending one.
Yes, unless the solicitor has a resolution for us. But let's take the first order first, TJ.
Correct, okay. So, this is the $85,000 transfer just to cover the snow and ice in the Facilities Department. Comes through vacancy savings.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. TJ, I thought it was a light snow year, so what's the explanation of needing to move?
Yeah, I mean, so it really just comes down to the fact that it was a light snow year, but we still needed to get our schools and our, all cleaned up and ready to go on our municipal buildings. So, sometimes we had to put down salt and sand and make sure those events were covered.
Do we spend the 1.6 that we budget?
1.6 was for the DPW. This is in the Facilities Department. They do not have the authority to deficit spend. That's why we have to come to the council to take care of transfers, and this should be the last transfer pending any other snow.
So, the authority to deficit spend is only with the DPW?
Only for the DPW.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, this requires a majority roll call. Vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos. Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent Counselor Williams. Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards. Absent Counselor Brown, absent Counselor Earth.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Devilla. Absent Counselor Whitfield.
All those in favor of suspending Rule nineteen to take this order up in one vote, say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The order is approved. Solicitor, is there any way, under the rules, that we can take item number nine, even though we do not have a two-thirds, even though we do not have nine members to vote in favor of this?
I would suggest taking a vote on the condition that we review further as to whether the most recent executive order waiving quorum rules, or whether the legislation the governor intends to file. He's filed one today that provided some relief for some financial aspects as to deficit spending, and as to use of a revolving fund. Those are pending. In addition, there's some other provisions in there about town meetings. My understanding is that's just the beginning. The effective date of the matters he filed today really go retroactive to March tenth. So, since this is the last meeting we're going to have for a while, I'd say vote it, subject to the condition that it meets the requirements of existing emergency orders or pending or to-be-filed legislation that would cover this date. Generally speaking, it would not, but we might catch a break.
Thank you, Solicitor. Are there any questions from the council for the solicitor? Do we need a motion for that, Solicitor?
Yes, I would say it would be in the form of motion to approve this, subject to the condition of pending legal review.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve this item, subject to the condition that it be pending legal review.
There is a motion made by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor Gomez. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, is there any discussion on the order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield, absent Counselor Devilla?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corrin?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent Counselor Williams, absent Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards, absent Counselor Brown, absent Counselor Earth.
Yes, all those in favor of suspending Rule nineteen to take this order up in one vote say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The order is approved. All right. I don't see anything else on this agenda, from my perspective, that is absolutely urgent that we take now. The ordinance for number ten, I look, does not go into effect until, it wouldn't go into effect until next year, and so it seems to me like we have ample time to deal with that. And then any of the other items seem to me can wait until we have a little bit more stability in terms of what it is that we are going to do as a council. So, with that being said, Madam Clerk, we are going to, if there is no further business before the council, which it appears that there is none, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just on item ten, the revolving fund, it says it goes into effect July one of twenty nineteen. I, can we, can somebody clarify that that's for the future and not immediate?
Yeah, that's probably old outdated language. By the time we actually got it before the City Council, we were talking about it last year, to go in effect July twenty nineteen, but now we pushed it out based upon Young Nose Audit of the H H S Department.
I understand, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Fenton, so if there are no, if there's no. Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Let's motion the items that we did not, or are not planning to take a vote on to committee. So can we have a motion for item number ten?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we table all remaining items.
Thank, thank you. There is a motion on the floor to table all remaining items, made by Counselor Letterman, seconded by Counselor Fenton. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
There are no more further business before the council tonight.
Okay, so, first of all, I want to thank all of the council, the councilors who are in attendance this evening. I know it is, it is difficult, I know we're in a time of flux. We tried, and I appreciate our staff for assisting me in getting, allowing us, or putting us in a position to follow the social distancing requirement. I apologize that some of the councilors saw their name tags in the pews, but it was no slight to you. It was just because we were trying to abide by what our Commissioner just spoke to, in terms of what it is that we should and should not do. With that said, I also want to thank the, the Elections Commission for providing us with hand sanitizer. I know they did not have to, and I know hand sanitizer is precious at this point, so I certainly appreciate Gladys and, and her department. Just a few updates. The next, we are no longer going to meet physically in the chambers until further notice, considering that the mayor has closed City Hall to the public. That certainly makes it more difficult, and in addition to the fact that the recommendation coming down from our president says that we should not be convening in groups of ten or more, that makes it almost impossible for us to meet physically. So from this point forward, this will be our last City Council meeting in the chambers. The hope is that we will have at least via a phone conference, a meeting on March thirtieth to deal with any financial orders that are absolutely imminent. The reality of it is that a phone conference probably will not suffice for a hearings meeting, and so those applications that are for review by the council for the March thirtieth meeting will be postponed indefinitely, until we can come up with a way, which we are working on, to possibly do a teleconference in which they can log in and we actually can see the petitioners. So, all of that is in the works. Certainly it is fluid as this virus is, and so I will keep the council updated as soon as I get additional information. The second thing that I want to update the council on is that our, we will be having a weekly meeting with the administration, T J Plant, Counsel, uh, Counselor, the Chief of Staff, Tom Ash, as well as Helen Carlton Harris, and anyone that we deem, to the extent we can, to be necessary for that phone conference, to update us on the status of events in the city of Springfield as it relates to, to the coronavirus. And so that will give councilors an opportunity to ask questions, and then it'll also allow us to receive an update from the administration in terms of what they are doing, to hopefully alleviate the concerns, or at least answer some questions that you guys are receiving from your constituents. I appreciate the councilors who sent me the questions in advance of the meeting this, this morning. It was a very informative meeting, and I appreciate Bill Baker from the mayor's administration for answering the questions to the extent he could, and getting that information back to you all, which I have emailed you in advance of this meeting. So if there are any other questions that you guys have in between now and the time in which the mayor gives his regular update on Monday, please get them to me. The sooner we have them, the more he might be able to speak to those particular questions that you have. Thirdly, the, our administrative staff is, we're going to follow what the mayor has asked us to do in terms of having a skeleton workforce in our chambers, or in, or in City Hall. And so our administrative assistants, I've asked only one of them to be present on a regular basis, and what they will do is they will rotate amongst the three of them, and ensuring that somebody will be here to answer phone calls from constituents in the event that people have concerns, which I'd imagine that they will. And so if somebody is sick, is sick, I've asked them to stay home, and they will work it out amongst themselves to figure out who will fill in when someone is absent. Trying to think if I missed anything. Our April sixth meeting is canceled. Our April twenty-seventh meeting is canceled. What I would like to see happen is ideally we have a phone conference to deal with any necessary financial orders in April, and then May eleventh, it would be nice if we could be set up via Zoom, in which I've been working with Steve, as well as T J, to see if we can at least have a meeting through our iPads, and hopefully have the public be able to chime in to the extent we can. And so you guys will certainly, you'll receive more information, we're probably going to have to test it out, and so just, just bear with us, as we're trying, you know, to figure out how we can conduct the business of the City Council remotely. Trying to think if I've missed anything. I don't think I have. Are there any questions from the council?
Just a point of information, Mr. President, if I may, uh, two points of information. One, all the subcommittee meetings between here and I believe April seventh, is this just a suggested target date, or the seventeenth shall be canceled as well?
My recommendation, and actually, a little, little stronger than a recommendation, my ask of all of you is to not hold any subcommittee meetings. They certainly couldn't be held here in the chambers, because no public, the, the public is, is not allowed to be present, and I'd imagine that in any subcommittee meeting, in order for it to be fruitful, we certainly want to open it up for the public to be present. However, it's not to say that we couldn't have those meetings in the chambers, you just would have them without the public, but I, it would seem to me that we ought to wait until we get this technology to the point where we can actually invite the public to be a part of the subcommittee meetings, and then we can move forward at that point. So my recommendation would be to not hold any subcommittee meetings during the month of April, and hopefully for our May meeting, that will sort of be the telltale as to whether we are in a position to do things like hold subcommittee meetings remotely. The governor, with his amendments to the open meeting law, has provided us with some flexibility to where we can have meetings without the public being president, present, which is evident by today's meeting, but it would seem to me that we would want to try to engage the public as much as possible, and to be honest with you, I think there are bigger things that we probably need to focus on between now and the month of April, other than having a, a subcommittee meeting that might not be on an issue that is an emergency. I mean, obviously, if it's something that is an emergency, then please get in contact with me, and we'll figure out how to make it happen.
Last point, speaking of emergency, God forbid, should we need, should we need to have an emergency meeting as a body? Will a remote meeting count towards that?
If, if we need to have a, an emergency meeting as a council, then it will be remote. And I think I've impressed upon the administration that we need to get our technology up to snuff as soon as possible, at the very least, to be able to have a phone conference. And according to what I've read, and my understanding of the amendments of the governor, as long as we have a way in which the public can either listen in via audio, or shortly thereafter, if we can post our meeting and the votes of our meeting in some way, shape, or form, which I've been assured by Focus Springfield and Steve, that that can happen, whether it's via audio, or whether it's via some other technology like Zoom, we will be able to have it recorded, and certainly posted to the website as worst-case scenario.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
My only question is, if we move to remote, and let's say we do do the Zoom situation, are we going to be allowed back into the building? Because some of us don't have fobs, including, uh, uh, councilors that were just elected, still haven't gotten their fobs to enter the building. I know we have fobs to get into the building, but respectfully, I know that, um, our iPads would be our best tool. One, if, if it's the clerk's office or whoever, to download Zoom onto it, and then from there, there, there's like a code that we can put out, out into the public, specific to the city, and the city can create an account, and hundreds of people can get on this Zoom, and you yourself can control the room with shutting off the public, and then just letting some people be able to, to talk like councilors, specific to some business. But if the administration, or if anybody needed some assistance with that, honestly, I think our best thing is, do we take our iPads home now and not come back, or essentially, because obviously Zoom is just an app that you can download for free. I think that would be the tool, and I know that we have to wait for some kind of more guidance when it comes to a meeting remotely, but I think that's the best option that we have on the table, so we can see each other's faces, and we could actually continue to do business if, if business is allowed.
So I agree with you, Counselor Gomez. My thought process is that we leave them here for now, and in the event that anything needs to be downloaded, we can rely on those in I T to download anything that is necessary, as well as for Steve and Focus Springfield to be able to test our iPads and make sure that things are working accordingly. It would seem to me that we would leave them for now. In terms of you getting into City Hall, I, I haven't heard anything from the mayor saying that he was going to shut city down to everybody, shut City Hall down to everybody. I can assure you, if he does, then we will make sure that we have what it is that we need to have in order to conduct the business of the council. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Thank you for everything that you're doing in the midst of this chaos, to make sure that the council can continue to function. It would be helpful, and I've reached out to the Law Department regarding this, but perhaps you can as well, speaking of the state of emergency, it would be helpful for the council to have a copy of the Declaration of Emergency that was signed, as well as a briefing, or some sort of summary of what powers that affords the mayor in this state of emergency, and also how that impacts the council's powers, or whether it plays a role in terms of what we're talking about going forward, the necessity, or otherwise, for us to approve financial orders, or really whatever other scenarios in which we might need to meet in the next month.
Noted, and we're fortunate enough to have this solicitor here, so I would imagine that's not a hard ask for you, solicitors. So if you could get us that information in terms of the powers of the mayor, I think what Counselor Letterman speaks to raises a great point, and if we could have that information as soon as possible, it would be greatly appreciated. Are there any other questions or comments? And so on that note, we will conclude this meeting. Again, I want to thank the councilors, and for those councilors who are not in attendance, who are watching at home, I completely understand, and for the councilors who are present, thank you, and certainly protect yourselves and your families moving forward.